To call the order of the October 13th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Dayton let the roll call show. Councilmember Kurtzwell is absent this evening. I'll look for a motion to excuse her. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Kurtzwell this evening.
Support.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes for September 22nd, 2025. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move the minutes as presented.
Motion is second. Any further discussion regarding the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of the bills for this evening. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move the bills as presented.
Support.
Motion is second. Any further discussion regarding the bills? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Dilk.
I'd like to move the agenda as presented by the mayor.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion regarding tonight's agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council, please come to the podium and the microphone there. It's a two-minute time limit. Please state your name and address for the city clerk, if you would.
My name is Glenn Black, and I live at 61011 Evergreen Court here in South Lyon. I've been in South Lyon for about 12 years. And I'd like to just say good evening to get started to Mayor Kennedy and to the council members. The topic that I have to bring here this evening may seem a little bit on the odd side. It has to do with substance abuse prevention. This is Paige George, and Paige is the Executive Director for the South Lyon Community Coalition for the Prevention of Substance Abuse. And I want to say that Paige has been in this community along with me for a good amount of time, being present on that topic exactly. And it's not a very sexy topic. It's only a big deal if it's your kid, your grandkid, or your niece, or your nephew, or somebody like that. One of the things that we find is a challenge for us, that folks tend to not think it's something that happens in our community. And that's not unique. That's pretty much the case in all communities. When you walk around and talk around and that sort of thing, you find out that everybody thinks, yeah, everything's fine. We're here to say that it's not that fine. You have a copy of the Oakland County Key Findings Report, and I'll only refer to it in one specific way. And the beginning piece of this has to do with vaping. What you'll see in there is that 2.5% of the 7th graders in Oakland County and 8.5, 9th grade and 11th grade students were using, at least on one occasion, an electronic vaping device during the 30 days prior to the survey having been taken. So if you take a look at those numbers, what you're seeing is a trend that takes you up about 300% from the 7th grade to the 9th and the 11th. And you can draw your own conclusions about where the number goes from there. So going from that point to the point that fundamentally it's illegal, so if you're a school-age child, then you have-
Excuse me, Mr. Black. I need you to kind of summarize. The two minutes has expired.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're welcome to come back at the next public comment at the end of the meeting to conclude your remarks.
I overdone it. I apologize, Mayor.
No problem. Yep, can certainly do that.
So, we're asking you to help us in three ways. One, become partners in their message and the community. If you know of someone who needs a resource in substance abuse prevention or mental wellness, just refer them to us. We have a lot of resources for free at our disposal for them. And also, we'd like you to help in identifying someone from the business community to be a business sector rep, to provide the coalition with feedback, and just kind of support our mission. So thank you for your time and attention. And so, just also, there is extra key finding reports in the back for anybody who's interested. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Paige George. I'm the Executive Director of the South Lyon Community Coalition.
And we need an address, if you would.
3070 Brookshire Court, Milford, 48380.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, anybody else wishing to address the council here? Okay.
Sorry, Mayor Kennedy. This is my first time being at one of these council meetings. It's really exciting. Anyways, my name is Christopher Gettums. I live at 565 Clark's Court at South Lyon, Michigan. Hi, everyone. I came up, I know that one of the topics we're going to talk about, and I'm sure I'm supposed to wait till we get to that point, is talking about these e-bikes and individuals driving these electronic bikes, or you can even say mopeds or whatnot. I would like to kind of point out, looking at that problem as the safety of those individuals and the community as well, maybe even looking and taking note of the voting regulations and laws that we have in Michigan already, where it's 14. We wait till the age of 14 to allow that individual to mature and understand the consequences that they can have, as well as licensing. I know that that's well beyond, like, our community to have licensing and such, but I'm wondering if there's something we can look at with helping the community understand, improving the safety of it, like requiring flashlights. That would be a huge advantage on what these bikes are. Go about 14 miles an hour when you're walking, and they come flying right past you. It'd be so nice if there's just a little light to let you know that there's something coming right past you, because it's pretty scary at night. So that was my question, or my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, we will close public comment at this point and move on to approval of tonight's consent agenda, which includes approval of the Holiday Spectacular Parade. Councilmember Mosher, sorry.
I move the consent agenda as presented by the mayor.
I'll support.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. At this point, we'll move on to a discussion of downtown with our DDA Director, Kim Rivera.
So, the Promotions Committee has multiplied by double, I'm excited to say, so it's getting exciting. The Holiday Spectacular plans are underway, so thank goodness you just passed the agenda thing. So far, we've reserved horse-drawn carriage rides, stick-in-style carolers, bell ringers, choir, fairy tale characters, circus performers, a petting farm, and ice sculptures. And we've begun sponsorship outreach, and already we have our first sponsor, so it's getting very exciting in a very short amount of time. And I also met with Diana Reagan, our Farmers Market Coordinator, Director, and we're discussing doing an outdoor nostalgic winter market at the Holiday Spectacular and maybe at the Carnival. So we've just started planning this. For the TIF, we're waiting for feedback from Oakland County, and since we've followed state law and the boundaries of the district haven't changed, Wade Trim recommends that the city council adopts the development plan, so just bringing you up to speed on that. I've been working with the Police Chief Unra and Fire Chief Conrad regarding the Halloween Home Decorating Contest, which you may have seen on the social media just recently. We already have people signing up, so that's really wonderful to see. There's actually several that have already emailed in their entry, so we'll see what those look like. And Witch's Night Out is on October 28th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Trick or Treat and Pup Parade is on October 30th, and I can't wait to see that. And Ladies Night is November 14th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. I've reviewed the social media professionals on file, as well as reviewing work of social media consultants who have experience promoting communities, and so we'll be posting the job specs to the city website, as well as the Michigan Downtown Association website. That's how I found this position, was through the MDA, so I think it'll be a good resource for us. Then I'll narrow it down to two or three consultants and make a recommendation. Downtown South Lyon, speaking of social media, Downtown South Lyon is being featured right now in social media on the Michigan Downtown Association page on their Instagram and Facebook. We're doing a social media takeover. And the EV chargers are connected via cell service to the EV Passport app, and I'm happy to report it actually works. So, that's really good news. And there's several other things, but I wanted to keep it brief.
Any questions for our DDA Director? Councilmember Dilk?
Just a couple of things. The sponsors for the holiday event, how many do you need, and what do people need to do, and how much is it?
Well, everybody here can actually sponsor. We're happy to work with you. We have one sponsor so far. I have two inquiries, but we're just starting the outreach, literally. So, yeah, we need several sponsors for that, because we want to put out more marketing, and in order to do that, we need the sponsorship for the activities.
Can you just tell people what a sponsor would get, or how much it costs?
Oh, there's a whole list, so I can-
Where they can see this?
Yes, so I can email it. I can also post it to our website. I'll do that. I'll put it on the DDA page in the Holiday Spectacular area. Actually, whoa, whoa. I'll put it on the front like we did for the Halloween as a news release.
And then, oh, sorry. The other question, I cannot remember. So, all right.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hanson.
Just a quick question. In regards to Molly Lallone coming to South Lyon and featuring us, if you could tell us a little bit more about that, and-
Oh, sure.
I mean, just so that people can keep an eye out for it.
Yes, yes. So Molly Lallone actually is a board member of the Michigan Downtown Association Board of Directors, and so she came out, and she actually was taking the video and taking a lot of photos. We went through a lot of stores. And so now, I've actually been posting, because they gave me the rights to do the takeover. So she was the person that connected us, connected the dots, so to speak.
No, that was all I had. I was kind of thinking from a standpoint of, like, would that be something we could utilize in the future, like especially when Pontiac Trail is under construction, just to drive, you know? So it's not like a one-and-done kind of thing, so.
Yes. I'm sure I can talk to the Director at the Michigan Downtown Association. I have a very good working relationship with her, so I feel pretty good about that, that I could reach out and ask for that.
That'd be awesome. No, and if there's any metrics that you could share in the future, like how, you know, how many clicks, that sort of thing, I'd love to hear what's her reactions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosher.
How did you feel about the Pumpkin Fest?
I loved it. I loved it. You know what I really loved? I didn't have to get in my car. I just ran over from my apartment. You guys probably saw me almost tripping, taking pictures of the parade. It was wonderful.
Because I know you were there for quite a while Saturday.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I didn't want to leave, actually, but I enjoyed it very much. I looked at it as an opportunity to volunteer and to meet everyone that I could possibly meet, so it was-
I think they're going to have a new board next year, and they may need your help.
Oh, okay. Good to know. Thank you.
And thanks for coming, by the way. That was quite nice to see you and talk to you.
Aw, thank you. I was impressed. It was really well-run.
Pretty good. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Kim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on to the Fire Chiefs' report tonight with Captain Ochel.
Good evening. Clearly, I'm not Chief Conrad. I'm asked to just come and convey three short points of information she wanted to share with you. First of all, run percentage, so since the beginning of October until this morning. Total runs for service for this month are 46, and that makes the year-to-date 1,118. Also, we received eight sets of turnout gear this past week, so that's coat and pants, very much appreciated, so our firefighters are very happy to have those. And then finally, we continue to make improvements to our burn facility over on Dixborough. This week also, we received three metal custom exterior doors that'll be installed after the prep work is done, so that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Captain Ochel? Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that Chief Conrad completed the Fire Staff Command Executive Leadership Program. Please pass on her congratulations.
We will. We're very proud of her for that. We will.
Councilmember Kimmel.
I happened to be over at the Clean Water Plant this morning. They were working on the tile tower, good grief, and I happened to notice those sitting on the truck, so I didn't know what they were.
Yeah, they're for the containers. They're going to be exterior doors for us to practice with.
Yeah, that's great. And secondly, my mother-in-law has moved into town, and she's, one of your guys had put in the smoke detector and what's the other one? Carbon monoxide, yeah. Very nice man, and so we feel cool that she can be there. She doesn't hear very well, so.
Well, we're happy to do it.
That was great, yeah. I'm very happy for that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks a lot, Captain. Moving on to Police Chief's report tonight with Chief Andrew.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members. Just want to talk about, officers spoke to a Cub Scout troop this week about law enforcement forensics at the United Methodist Church. Our three probationary officers are doing very well, which is great news. And then the Pumpkin Fest, I wanted to talk about that. The parade went very smoothly, and per the officers, it was a record number crowd. They'd never seen that many people there before. So there were no major incidents reported that weekend, and since he's here in the audience, I'd like to thank Jeff Archie for all that DPW did on helping us close down the roads and put up the detour signs. They're kind of the unsung heroes. They're in the background. They do a ton of work. You know, the police officers are out front where everybody can see, but there's a lot that goes into shutting down roads, so I just want to thank him.
Any questions for Chief Andrew this evening? Councilmember Bogart.
I noticed on social media, there were aerial photos of the parade and the Pumpkin Fest event. Was that the department's drone?
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, it was. We hit an officer and the cadet on one of the rooftops, and they did have the drone out, and they were just watching for any suspicious activity, if anybody was on a rooftop where they shouldn't have been, but they didn't see anything out of the ordinary.
That was really neat to see. Thank you.
Anything else?
That was a great idea.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. At this point, we'll move on to the Plant Moran Audit Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us here to present on the results of the financial statement audit for the year ended June 30, 2025. My name is Tim St. Andrew, and with me is Phil Feminino. So our plan is to cover the contents of the presentation that was distributed to you before the meeting. Covers the executive summary, a few financial graphs, and then the required communications that we have to have with you as the governing body. Certainly, if you have any questions as we're working through the presentation, feel free to stop us. We'd be happy to address them. Before we get into the deliverables, I would like to first thank Paul and Patricia for their help during the audit. So we start the audit back in August, and everything was in great shape. Everyone here at the city that we worked with was very helpful, so certainly appreciate their efforts. All right, so here's the executive summary. The first one here on pages 1 through 3 of the audit report, that would be our auditor's opinion letter. And the city did receive an unmodified opinion this year, which is the highest form of assurance that we can provide. Means that the numbers, the disclosures within the financial statements are materially accurate, and the users can rely on these financial statements. The general fund fund balance did increase this year by $1.1 million, from $6.7 million last year to $7.8 million this year. Of the $7.8 million of fund balance, $7.5 million of that is what we call unassigned, so that means that it's not restricted or committed for any specific purpose. The city continued to invest in its infrastructure, with $5 million spent this year, mostly on road improvements and utility system improvements. And the city continued, as part of bullet point number three, did continue to spend down the road improvement debt proceeds that were received back in 2023. Still $2.5 million to spend out of those proceeds. The city has $3 million in fund balance in its capital project funds that are available to spend on future capital projects. The city continued to pay down its debt this year in 2025, with $2 million being paid down from principal. And lastly here, the Water and Sewer Fund did have a $408,000 operating loss, which includes depreciation, which is a non-cash item, and so backing out the non-cash item, there would have been a small operating gain. So with that, I'll invite Phil up to cover the financial slides.
So to start, we always like to start with the general fund, looking at your revenue. So you have a four-year history here, but you'll see that the revenue did increase about $670,000. Of that, you'll see increases in your property tax revenue, as well as your state and federal. So within your state and federal, you were able to recognize the remainder of your ARPA funding that you would have received a couple of years ago. You had eligible expenses there, so you recognized the rest of that. And some of that would have been offset by just some decreases in fines and fees, so that's really dependent on your building permit fees, so that was down a little bit this year, which would offset some of those, but overall, you still had a $670,000 increase in that revenue. The next slide that we have here that we like to look at is showing your property tax collections for the year. So there's about $24.4 million worth of collections of that, but we like to show that only 38% relates to the city. So that would include your operating millage, debt service, any DDA. The rest of that, all that's collected, that's just collected by the city and then distributed to all those taxing authorities you see there, such as the schools, state education, Art Zoo, and all those other millages in the county. On the next slide, we have the general fund expenditures, and so once again, this is a four-year history. The expenditures here increased about $240,000, and if you look, you'll see that's really just pretty much related to your debt service. So in 2023, there was actually two payments on the debt service, so you'll see that that number was about $535,000, and then last year, you would have had zero. So this year is just really recognizing that normal payment of $267,000, so that really does kind of explain the increase here. So the next slide that we like to look at, and Tim mentioned a little earlier, is looking at your unassigned fund balance. So that's the least restrictive, can be used as needed. That's about $7.5 million, up about $1 million from last year. And we compare to your annual operating expenditures to show if you didn't have any revenues coming in, how much could you, how much do you have available to cover those expenditures? And so here, you'll see that's about 86%, and so we would consider that to be healthy. So if there was no other revenues, how much could you, just using your fund balance that you have, cover those costs? Not going to go into a ton of detail here, but this slide just shows the remaining of your governmental funds, so not your water and sewer, but all the other funds, showing really their fund balance. And what you'll see here is in those categories, most are all in restricted, so your major road or your local road, that's restricted for roads. You have tiny amounts or non-spendable, that would just be anything that was already prepaid. Your capital projects fund, though, is all committed, so that's for future projects. You can change those, but they are currently committed. And then your municipal street, so this is tracking that restricted from your debt proceeds, as well as now that you're starting to collect property taxes to pay down that debt, any excess of those collections that are recorded here is restricted for future debt payments. The next slide is now looking at your water and sewer fund. And here, we're looking at your operating revenue plus any taxes and comparing it to your operating expenses. So we do exclude depreciation in this one, excluding that non-cash item, but we do add back any capital improvements or debt service payments. So overall, you get about $4.8 million in that operating revenue plus property taxes as compared to about a $5.7 million in your operating expenses and your capital improvements. So as you can see, there's always that little bit of a gap. You're using some of that fund balance or some of those items to pay for those projects, but really, that amount of expenses was down this year, just as there was less capital And then finally, we always like to talk a little bit about legacy costs. So starting with your pension, that is about 65.8% funded. It's important to know that for your pension, that is measured as a MERS year-end, which is December 31st. And that's up just about 1% from the prior year due to market performance. If you were to look at your valuations that you may get from MERS, the funding valuations, you're going to notice a little difference. Theirs will say about 68%. The real difference there is just how they smooth some of the gains or losses. So MERS will do that over four to five years, just to make it so that your contributions that you make aren't significantly fluctuating, whereas the auditing standards in the GASB really require for your financial statements, which are shown there, to be at fair market value, so those gains or losses are recognized immediately. So you'll just have some fluctuation there, so that's why it'll be 65.8% versus 68% as shown by MERS. And then finally, what we wanted to talk about here is your OPEP. So your OPEP plan is about 63% funded. That's up 12% from the prior year, really from contributing those additional contributions and being able to earn interest on it. But what we really wanted to call out is about five to six years ago, if you were to look, you'll see you had 0% funded, so in those five to six years, you're up to 63% funded, showing that focus on those legacy costs. And a lot of communities would love that. They're, you know, struggling to get this percentage up, and you've really been able to go from 0% to 63%. So once again, that's just a good job of being able to, you know, dedicate those funds and make those contributions into that trust that you set up five to six years ago, and really just let those earnings help kind of address some of this cost. And with that, I'll turn it back to Tim, just to quickly go over the end of audit letter.
So this slide here summarizes the end of audit letter, which does include the required communications that we have to have with you as the governing body. As I indicated in the opening comments, the audit went really well this year, so we didn't have any audit findings that we had to communicate to you. So the letter is actually pretty vanilla, which is a good thing. That's what we're all hoping for. But a few highlights from the letter on this slide here. So we didn't have any transactions entered into that lack guidance, or that were entered into the wrong period. We didn't have any disagreements or difficulties encountered during the audit. And we do point out the two significant estimates that Phil just covered, pension and retiree healthcare. We do work with management to understand those assumptions used to determine those estimates, and we do rely on the actuary report to make sure that what gets reported here is accurate. So with that, happy to cover any questions you may have.
So boring is good.
Boring is good, yes.
Any questions regarding the audit for this year? Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge the city's staff on a job well done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and certainly appreciate the efforts of everybody that was involved in that. We have no unfinished business this evening. New business number one is the Nine Line Project.
Nine Line is a community corridor collaboration. The ultimate goal of the 10 communities in Oakland County is to- The ultimate goal of the 10 communities in Oakland County is to create a 30-mile pedestrian and cycling corridor spanning the whole county. The purpose of the Nine Line Memo of Understanding is to agree to work together with the other communities on creating a uniformed look of a trail and promote activities along the Nine Line. The Memo of Understanding is a nine-binding agreement between the five communities and is for the purpose of planning and development of the Nine Line pathway. I've attached the Oakland County Nine Mile Pathway Phase II Task Force, the Memo of Understanding, and Nine Mile Corridor West Phase II Feasibility Study. The possible course of action tonight, or approve or not approve, the Oakland County Nine Mile Pathway Phase II Task Force. Member Von Esten, tonight, we have Rachel Bush from OHM and Simon Rivers from Oakland County Parks to discuss the project and answer any questions you may have regarding the project.
Hi, folks. I'm Simon Rivers from Oakland County Parks. Very excited to be here today. As Paul mentioned, we are here to present the Nine Line, Nine Mile Corridor Project, and excited to present the memorandum of understanding for you between the Phase II of the Nine Line, which are the following communities: Novi, Northville, Lion Township, and South Lion, as well as Oakland County. Any questions before I continue?
Need to bring it to the floor first? We have a motion. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Oakland County Nine Mile Pathway Phase II Task Force Memo of Understanding.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Hanson, second from Councilmember Moser. And now we will open it up for discussion.
Wonderful. So, as I mentioned, as Paul mentioned, the MOU is a voluntary agreement between our five communities to develop and plan out a pathway reaching from the west side of the county to the east side, and that involves 10 communities, as well as Oakland County. And it's a voluntary MOU, and OHM is providing planning assistance to... The scope includes grant assistance, as well as task force support, promo and informational materials, and plan implementation.
Rachel, anything that...
Hello. Thank you for having us tonight. This project is very near and dear to my heart. It was the first project that I worked on when I joined OHM Advisors in 2022. The Oakland County Parks and OHM Advisors, we had been building a relationship and received... We provided an application to SEMCOG to receive a Transportation Assistance Planning Grant, which funded the Phase I study. And that allowed us to really look at what is possible to build on to the existing non-motorized network on that side of Oakland County. And, you know, as you move from east to west, there are very unique opportunities in each community, and ultimately, the purpose of the study is to sort of connect these downtown districts, South Lion, Farmington, Northville, Ferndale, even Oak Park, Hazel Park, and also their recreation amenities, and creating the option for folks who live near Nine Mile to bike or walk, instead of having to get in a car and drive. So that was kind of the intention behind Phase I. The Parks and Rec Board of Commissioners awarded another round of funding to complete Phase II, which we wrapped up at the beginning of this year. And, you know, we, moving into this part of Oakland County, we encountered a different set of opportunities and challenges. The sidewalk network is very piecemeal here. It's kind of development by development, and there are a lot of gaps, and honestly, a lot of safety issues, particularly on more... They are low-traffic roads, but there isn't any dedicated space for people to walk or bike, forcing them to kind of use the street. And so the Nine Line would provide an opportunity, a dedicated space for folks to walk or bike with their kids, their pets, and really be able to get outside and enjoy the beautiful scenery out here. And I believe you also mentioned just the connections to the regional trail network. The potential there is huge. This east-west connection through Oakland County would provide folks with, you know, the connection to potentially the Levine Lakelands Trail at some point, or the ITC Corridor Trail, or the Huron Valley Trail. There's also the potential on the east end to connect to the Liverneu Avenue of Fashion, and then take that to connect to the Joe Louis Greenway, and visit any of those communities connected there. So there's a lot of opportunity, not just for people who maybe do want to put down some miles, but for folks who just want to, you know, leave their front door and go outside and go for a walk or a short bike ride.
And we have here a poster where you can see some of the trail connections, as Rachel mentioned, and we're really excited. I have some stickers for you all, because we spent a long time developing a Nine Line logo. This was one of the more complicated pieces to coordinate all of our opinions and differing design ideas. And so we're really excited to have a product for you, and excited to continue the work on the Nine Line. Yeah. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Bogert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, for one, am excited by all of this, being able to connect people, especially people who don't have means, such as a car or public transportation, to get from place to place. One of the topics that's been discussed a lot lately is the use of e-bikes and e-scooters. Is that a consideration for this?
Well, absolutely. South Lion is free to develop any sort of regulation, as you see fit, on your section of the Nine Line. One of the really wonderful parts of this agreement is that each community manages their own section, right? And so there are, you know, standards and recommendations that were provided, but if South Lion, you know, wants to regulate e-bikes, you're free to do that, of course, in any way that you see fit, you know? So there's no mandate for e-bikes or anything like that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you. I just wondered if there would be any recommendations from that.
Oh, from the e-bikes specifically? The recommendations are a vision for the corridor, and specifically focused on infrastructure, rather than potential users. So, you know, we have had this conversation of South Lion's role in supporting the Nine Line. You are the last mile on the west side of the corridor.
Yeah, we know.
Once they get the best mile. There, I think there's a lot of opportunity at that Pontiac Trail and Nine Mile intersection. It is used by a lot of students to get to school there, and we see a lot of potential for safety improvements along that, from that intersection to the west, along Nine Mile Road. And ultimately, the plans, both Phase I and Phase II, are a vision for the corridor, but they are subject to change based on, you know, planning and development decisions that may happen, funding, yeah, funding availability, and other external factors.
Okay. And I just wanted to let you know, I do marketing for a civil engineering firm, and the whole time I was sitting here, I was like, oh, I love their logo.
Great. Well, I do have these...
Want to take them up there? Thank you very much.
So you mentioned the patchwork of sidewalks, if you will, that you found out in this area. That typically lies within Lion Township. I mean, we're pretty well covered from the city and for sidewalks, and even from Pontiac Trail to Dixboro, et cetera. So where do you stand on getting Lion Township to sign on to this? Have they signed on yet?
I believe they have.
I believe so, yeah. We haven't received the signature, but it was on the Township Board agenda for last week. And we didn't receive any sort of, you know, follow-up from them. Everything seemed to have gone really smoothly.
Okay, because, I mean, your point's well taken, that entire, you know, walkway along Nine Mile to the east of Pontiac Trail, that the kids do take to the middle schools, there are no sidewalks for all practical purposes. So this would be a welcome addition, obviously. Councilmember Hanson.
I just really appreciate this project, and appreciate both your efforts and the team's efforts in putting this out and trying to improve the walkability, especially along this corridor. I guess my question, I was looking at the issues section, and, you know, like Steve kind of touched on earlier, you know, from like about Griswold, you know, heading east on Nine Mile, you know, it's very spotty as far as the paving and whatnot. Some of the subdivisions that are going in are agreeing to pave certain portions. Does some of the funding that you discussed, is that possible, not just for sidewalks, but also for, you know, paving, crosswalks, et cetera? Maybe you could allude to some of that, that might incentivize not just some of these developers, but also the township and the county to help pay for some of these areas?
Yeah, absolutely. We see a few different sort of threads of funding sources. There's local, state, federal funding. Particularly in this segment, we've been exploring the potential of tapping into safe routes for schools. You know, there is also, you know, the requirement of developers to provide a minimum six-foot, eight-foot, or 10-foot pathway along the frontage of their property. So there are plenty of funding sources that we are considering and strategizing around that don't directly come from a capital improvements budget. We are looking to alternative funding sources.
And that's one of the wonderful things about having OHM on board on this project, is that they're going to be able to, you know, help us look for some of that grant and funding. And, yeah, the Safe Routes to Schools, you know, that's an organization that's nationwide, and there are grants that are, you know, infrastructure grants, and there's an eligibility list. I do have some more information for you all, if you'd like. Thank you. It's...
I'll take it. You want to pass it on?
So, yeah, there certainly is the opportunity for OHM, as well as Oakland County Parks, to assist in that search for funding.
Yeah. One of the first deliverables we're working on in this phase is, you know, looking to 2026, and sort of building out a calendar of grant and other funding source deadlines, so that the communities can be prepared, and we can help them be prepared to submit applications and potentially secure funding.
Councilmember Kibble.
Are there any ability for you guys to have access to getting easements and things if it needs to be... Like if the typography is bad, you know, where you end up needing to make things plain out a little bit more, so somebody doesn't get hurt? And secondly, the... So the road is just on one side, right?
It does jog from one side of Nine Mile to the other side, and in some segments, it is a treatment recommended on both sides.
Okay.
So it doesn't continuously stay on the north side or the south side of the road, based on right-of-way availability.
Yes, okay. So it's whatever the nature of that area is, if it doesn't support that.
Exactly. Yeah, the conditions vary a lot across the entire corridor, and, you know, particularly when it comes to road ownership, that also is a factor in whether or not there is even the potential to acquire that additional right-of-way. So all of these things were taken into consideration when we were preparing the segments and the vision for each community.
Thanks.
Any other questions this evening? Because we have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Moser. City Clerk Deaton, if we just send a roll call vote for this?
Kibble?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bogert? Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming and the explanation. Certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. And we have, for folks in attendance, we have some Nine Line stickers for you all, so please, please do take some. And then Paul, I was hoping to get the signatures tonight, or do you want to...
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot. Moving on to new business number two, purchase of an ARM model ALC 25 yard chassis-mounted leaf collector from MTech.
Good evening, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. This one's been a kind of a long working process for me. We'll start off by, I guess, reading the explanation of the topic. The DPW is requesting the purchase of the chassis-mounted leaf collector on a Freightliner M2106 dual-steer chassis. This vehicle will be replacing our 21-year-old manually-operated pull-behind leaf machine. This machine is a one-person operation, as compared to our current two-person operation. We will keep our old leaf machine as a backup or potential third pickup unit if needed. The leaf pickup tube on the new machine is hydraulically... Hydraulically moves hydraulically, sorry, excuse me, moves hydraulically with a six-way boom, and is controlled from inside the cab. This unit is also... This unit also has a wood chipper back door, and we can use it, can be used for that purpose. We will be treating our old combination sewer cleaning truck for $50,000 on this unit, yes, $50,000 on this unit. This is a budgeted item, current fiscal year, and would be ready for delivery, I just got an update on that tonight, by Thursday.
No pressure, right?
No, no pressure. I mean, if it doesn't go through, he understands. But it is an in-stock item, ready to be put into our fleet. The pricing for this leaf machine is through Sourcewell, one of our government purchasing programs. The funds for this purchase will be coming out of Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund, GL 642979550. Materials attached, there's supporting documents, quotation from MTech, a member of our cooperative purchasing program, Sourcewell, photos also included. Possible courses of action tonight, approve, do not approve, purchase of the ARM model ALC 25 yard chassis-mounted leaf collector from MTech for $231,752.55 from GL 64297550. And I don't know, did everybody get that there's an amendment to the budget? It kind of got added a little late, so that's also two-part on that.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the ARM model ALC-25 yard chassis-mounted leaf collector from MTech for $231,752.55 from GL, item 642-979.550.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, second from Councilmember Bogert. Do we have any further discussion regarding the item? Councilmember Hanson?
Just one comment. Since Sourcewell is our government purchasing program, there was no need for three bids, because we are getting basically that reduced rate.
Correct. And I did look at multiple units on this, and this is our best... Correct. And I did look at multiple units on this, and this is our best bang for our buck by far.
Well, those leaves are starting to fall, so.
Nobody else is going to pick them up, so.
Any other questions or discussion? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this one, please.
Dilg?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kibble? Kennedy?
Yes. And now I need a motion and a second for the budget amendment here. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the Equipment Replacement Fund fiscal year 2025-2026 budget under GL Account Line Item 642-979.550 from $230,000 to $231,752.55 to reflect the price increases for the purchase of the ARM model ALC-25 Yard Chassis Mounted Leaf Collector from M-Tech.
One second. A motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Moser. Any discussion regarding this? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this, please.
Bogart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business number three, city manager search. Before we begin discussion on this next item, I want to provide some background for those in our audience, as well as our viewers back home. On Tuesday, September 22nd, City Manager Zelnick informed City Council of his intention to retire effective November 4th, 2025. "I know from a personal perspective, and hopefully all the council members feel similarly, that I'm grateful for the progress and improvements the city has realized during the seven years that Paul has been our city manager, and I wish him the very best in his retirement. As a result of his decision, we now need to identify and select a recruiter to aid in finding the city's next city manager." And with that, City Manager Zelnick, please go ahead and introduce the item, if you would.
Thank you. The staff has contacted several organizations that perform city manager searches and hires. We sent each council member four proposals that offer this service. City Council can choose to select one of the firms at our meeting to conduct the search and hire. Request additional information before making a selection on which firm to hire. Choose to request additional proposals, or select another alternative for hiring the city managers. I have included a proposal from four, proposals from four executive search firms. Possible course of actions: approve the selection of the four, one of the four proposals to proceed with conducting an executive search. Request additional information. Choose to request additional proposals, or select another alternative for selecting and hiring a city manager.
Thank you. So at this point, I'm assuming every, everyone has had a chance to look at the proposals that have been provided from the search firms. I'd like to just take a straw poll here to see where we stand as far as preliminary recommendation on who the recruiter might be. And we'll start that discussion with Councilmember Dilg.
You just want my?
I just want your opinion of the four, if you have one that you thought was better than the other three, or if you had two that you thought were equal, or just kind of where it stands so that we'll see if we can come to some point of consensus and agreement here to select one.
I was most interested in Walsh Municipal Services. I thought they had excellent experience. I, their price point seemed to make sense, and I thought their timeline was the best of the ones that I saw. At least, you know, it was, you know, things can happen, but I thought it was a pretty aggressive timeline that I was.
Could you tell me which one?
This one?
Oh, okay, thank you.
So that's what I thought.
Okay. Thank you very much, councilmember. Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, I also liked Walsh Municipal Services. I liked their price point, their descriptions, their customized proposal. I was also kind of drawn to Vetrano Consulting, which I believe we used in the past. So their price point was about the same, but, I mean, the timetable that was included in Walsh's proposal, I mean, I would love the idea of finding a city manager by December, but all things being equal, I mean, you know, we did use Vetrano before, so there's where I stand.
Okay. Councilmember Moser.
I too like the Walsh proposal, but I also like the Vetrano proposal as well. He is already familiar with the city. We used him when we hired Paul. And I'll be honest with you, I don't see us getting a city manager before December or by December. That's wishful thinking. But with my only experience being with Mr. Vetrano, I liked the way he conducted it. He spoke with everybody in City Hall and all the department heads. I'm not sure how many of the other, like, staff employees that he talked with, but he took his time and he listened. And I think he gave us a pretty cool candidate, but I would not be unhappy to use them again. I, he was pretty thorough, in my opinion, but either him or Walsh, either one of those two I would go with.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Kibble.
I like Vetrano, too. I thought that he put us in a pretty, pretty good situation when Paul came in. Price point, I, for some reason, I didn't end up seeing that in.
For that one was 15.5. Oh, Walsh.
Walsh is on 14.
Pardon me?
Page 14. Yeah, it's 14.5. Yeah.
Okay, well, I mean.
I think they were all pretty close.
They're all close, yes, right.
Okay. Thank you, councilmember.
Can I, just one other thing? I don't know if you guys have considered this, but also Plant Moran, I do believe, has people that are available to come in for interim, and possibly they can do a search, too. I don't know if they've been contacted. But with budget, you know, starting to work now, it might not be a bad idea to talk to them.
Councilmember Bogart.
Due to some personal matters, I wasn't able to fully research this topic, so I defer to my fellow councilmembers.
Okay. So after going through the proposals here, so the concern I have with Vetrano is he brought us, he brought us Paul, that was great. He brought us other candidates that were not so great because he didn't do his research in depth.
I don't know that that's true.
So when you looked at some of the other backgrounds of some of these individuals, it would have been challenging for the city to have made the progress that we made in the past seven years if we had selected one of those. Just my opinion. Looking at Frank Walsh, okay, Frank Walsh has spent 17 years as a city manager in St. Joseph, 11 years as a township manager in Meridian Township, five years as a city manager in Cedar Springs, and over 33 years total in Michigan local government. He's a guy that sat in the chair, understands what it takes to sit in that chair, and understands what you'd be looking for for someone to sit in that chair. Also like the fact that, you know, once placed, he will guarantee their placement for a year. Okay, the other, the other one individual was six months. I think Vetrano was 12 months also. So what we have at this particular point is we have four people that have selected Frank Walsh as their number one. We have a couple that has recused himself because he didn't read the material, and one who has Vetrano as a number one. So what I'd be looking for is a motion, and we'll see how the votes come out on it. Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the selection of Walsh Municipal Services and proceed with conducting an executive search for a city manager.
I'll support.
Any further discussion regarding the Frank Walsh selection? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Motion carries. So we will be retaining Frank Walsh to begin that search. Thank you. At this point, we will move on to a discussion of the budget. If anyone has any questions regarding the budget for this evening. Okay. At this point, we'll open the floor for public comment. Any, anyone wishing to address the council, please come to the podium. It's a two-minute time limit. State your name and address for the city clerk. And if I cut somebody off previously and you have other information, please feel free to come on down. Seeing none, we will close public comment at this point, move on to the city manager's report with City Manager Zelnick.
A few items this evening. The Pontiac Trail Road Project planning and obtaining of easements and permits continues and working with the various agencies. That'll be an $11 million project, and that will begin in the spring of 2026. Maybe some of you have noticed some of the work being done at the First Responders Monument. They are working on the site for the placement of the supports and the roof framing. Should take approximately two weeks to complete those items. Project status regarding my departure. I've been meeting and working with the department heads and consultants to ensure that our current pending and upcoming projects continue to move forward during the time of transition, including the planning and preparation of the 2026-2027 budget. I've submitted some information to councilmembers and wait additional feedback regarding the 138 South Lafayette and the preference in how to proceed to handle the contamination at that particular site. The waste hauling contract, we have, we held a pre-proposal meeting with three of the contractors a few weeks ago, and the bids are due on November 3rd. The 2026 road project, which is the paving of the city streets, we're working with our bond council discussion, the next issuance of bonds, and we're putting the final pieces of information together before announcing the 2026 road paving project and which subdivision that's going to be. We expect that announcement to occur at the next city council meeting. Regarding the e-bike ordinance, we'll be, we're finalizing the changes that were made based upon the discussions that took place at city council, and we'll be bringing that before council at a future meeting. We're still reviewing information as it relates to the federal government shutdown and how it may affect some of our current and future dealings with federal agencies, including the community development block grant funds or permits that run through the federal government. Hopefully, we'll get that issue resolved soon, and I'll update you when I, when I learn more. And the last item is that the community development block grant public hearing is going to be scheduled at the next city council meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Kibble.
Where are you with the parking lot?
I'm sorry, which parking lot?
The one that they wanted to end up putting at.
At Eight Mile Road, are you speaking of?
No, no, the one in town.
Park?
Yeah.
Oh, the park or the parking lot?
Parking lot. The one we got, the thing from Standard, you know, I mean, when.
Oh, are you talking about the contamination at 138? Yeah, that's, we're waiting for additional information from councilmembers that want to chime in on how they want to proceed on that. That's kind of similar to the item that happened prior to Michigan Seamless Tube, where they wanted us to take over control of that. The recommendation, kind of working with the city attorney and I, is to just continue to monitor that or make them clean up the site and not just release them from any of their liability on that site. So it's, I'm still waiting for additional feedback because I did request from councilmembers to try to get their feedback on how we want to proceed so we can bring that back to, forward to a next city council meeting.
How many, how much feedback have you had so far, Paul?
I've only gotten two council comments, so hopefully I have a few other comments. Or if, you know, we're waiting to the next council takes, takes over, that's, that could happen also.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the city manager? Councilmember Hanson.
Just a question as far as the First Responders Monument. How much more beyond this, you know, completing the roof and that structure until it's completed, I guess?
Well, this was the next phase of the project based upon the funds that were raised, and I have to check with the final emails, but that was something that this has been, as everybody knows, been ongoing for a couple of years now and waiting for the project and the steel prices to come down and for it to continue to get the area raised, so to put on the steel structure and hang the bell, and there's additional lighting, landscaping, and some of those items. So that's still looking at probably next year. But this is the main portion that's going to really look great, that people are going to see this activity taking place based upon all the donations that have occurred throughout the community over the last few years.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, councilmember?
No.
Could I just ask?
Sure, councilmember Kibble.
Where are we with the columbarium, getting, you know, getting that?
We're waiting delivery on that. We made contact through the organization just, just last week, and we expect that, hoping it's going to be placed within, within the next several weeks.
Okay, the pads have already been poured and all?
The original pad was poured. After that gets placed, then the DPW will be installing additional sidewalk around it, as well as a pathway leading to it. And not only that part of the cemetery, but we're also looking at opening the other section, Section 11, in 2026 also. So that'll be coming back before city council based upon the fee schedule for the columbarium, as well as that new section.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Paul. At this point, we'll move on to council comments, and we'll start this evening with Councilmember Kibble.
Well, it's been beautiful outside, and that's not just in our South Lion here, so, but it's been cool being able to get around. The, I'm, I'm still really disappointed, though, that our traffic is, is like, people that are driving like they're crazy, and it's everywhere. And I don't know if it's, if there's some way to end up getting, getting something to end up crossing to get people back on track because, I mean, you're seeing people that are pulling off on the road right in front of people, people that are, I don't know, I mean, it's just crazy. And with all the kids and stuff that are walking to school and that, and their mothers and fathers that are driving them to school, just completely, completely taking over our roads. I just hope we could end up finding some way to get a better balance because somebody's really going to get hurt, and we need to get to it before that happens. That's really all I've got there.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Hanson.
Just wanted to comment about the leaf pickups to pay close attention as far as those leaf pickups. Now that we've got a new piece of equipment here in the city. As far as, you know, the color changes, it's been great to walk around downtown and attend some of these events, especially with my kids and see the colors changing. I mean, granted, it's always too soon, I guess, but today, as I was trying to mow the lawn in what I thought was going to be 70-degree weather, it turned out to be closer to 80, so it was definitely pretty hot. So just wanted to comment on the color changes and enjoy the pathways and the changing fall colors, so.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to speak about Pumpkin Fest. It was a great weekend. It was amazing to see how many people were there enjoying themselves. I had the pleasure of running the stage during the day, and it was just really neat to see huge crowds of people. And also, that weekend was South Lion Live, which raised funds for Blessings in a Backpack. They had a great turnout. Just want to thank everyone who's involved, from the planners to the volunteers, to the sponsors, and also the DPW for the great work. Thank you. That's it?
Okay. Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Moser.
Along the lines of Pumpkin Fest, a big thank you goes out to all our departments, police, fire, DPW, water and sewer. But I did want to say something about our police department and the great job they did. We had a gentleman there with two small boys. One got lost. He was hearing impaired and on the spectrum. Everybody got out and looked for him, found him immediately, but the police department was extremely responsive. It was quick. He wasn't, in his mind, I don't. quick. He wasn't, in his mind, I don't think he thought he was lost, because he was playing in the bouncy houses. But the parents, my heart goes out to him, because he was freaking out. You know, when you have a child with a disability such as that with a hearing impairment and autism, it's, it's a very scary time. So, thank you, Chief Honra, if you can pass that along to the guys that were there that helped. I know, I think Tony was there and Audra at the time to respond to the gentleman, but they were all out there. And we had all our, our volunteers were out looking, too. So, it was, and it wasn't but maybe 10, 15 minutes. I mean, it was not that long, in my mind, but I'm not a parent. It was probably an eternity for that guy, so. But yeah, and then thank you to all the volunteers, because we did get a bunch at the end there. They kind of, we made that last-ditch effort, "Ple, please help." We did get the help we needed. I'm glad the parade went smoothly, because that's always got hiccups. But for the 40th year, I think everything went well. It was our highest ticket sales ever. Everybody was very, very happy. Kathy Swan did an excellent job. Lisa Popa with the parade. And I know I'm missing a lot of people. Randy Paradise with the food, Troy with the, the bouncies, Shelley with the booths, oh my gosh, the booth. She did an amazing job with that. So, just everybody coming together, and it was just a really good event for everybody, and I think everybody enjoyed it. Of course, the weather was stellar. That, I mean, okay, I'm going to get struck by lightning, but it usually rains Pumpkinfest weekend. Not so this year. So, it was, it was a really good event, and I'm going to be, miss being on board a little bit. But that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you. Along those lines, we should also thank Lori. She was been on the board for a while, and, and she's been the treasurer, which is a huge job. So, I want to thank her and for the work that she's done. And I know there's other people on the board that are retiring from the board, and just want to say congratulations for making Pumpkinfest such a great event for so many years. It's very much appreciated. I did, wanted to talk a little, just for a second, about the e-bike ordinance. I have been on the city council for six years, and I have never had any issue where people approach me on the street, mail me letters, email. I've had phone calls about people about this, this e-bike ordinance. I really did want to have a, a committee. I thought it would be a good time to, to involve some of our residents, because there is heated discussion on both sides. I can't believe how almost balanced it is from the feedback I've been getting. But it sounds like, at least until we get the next round of the ordinance, that we're not going to do that. So, I would actually encourage people to, if you have more thoughts on this and you're thinking about it, especially once the packet comes out and the new ordinance, you know, the changes we've made comes out, is to email us and to call us and to send us letters, so that we really do know what people are saying, so we can make a good decision on this. Because I've been doing a lot of research, and there's just a lot of different ways we could go with some of these things. So, anyway, I would just encourage that kind of commitment to that and to really other issues that have a lot more effect in your life, to please, you know, be involved. I just wanted to let everyone know that there is an Affordable Housing Expo that the First United Methodist Church is putting on, October 19, from 12 to 2. There'll be food there. That's at 640 Lafayette, if you don't know. They are going, it's about raising awareness, building advocacy, and inspiring collective action to ensure affordable housing is a reality for everyone. I know that there will be a lot of elected officials there, some here, some of our state representatives will be there as well. I think it would be, I think it's going to be a really great event. There's going to be a lot of different vendors and booths and, and people to talk to there. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank Paul and Patricia and anyone else who helped on making our audit so boring. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Tonight, I just want to remind everyone that there are only two farmers' markets left for this year on Saturday, running from 9 o'clock until 2:00 p.m., so make a point to head over on Saturday and check out what they have available. And finally, drive around our community and check out the great Halloween decorations that folks have put up at their homes. It's truly this time of year that brings me to ask that eternal question, after seeing some of those extensive displays. Where do you store all that stuff after Halloween is over? And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Dilg?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
See you in two weeks. Thank you very much.